Gentlemen, we've got a hot mic and we're live streaming.
We're not going to start for five more minutes. We've got four minutes till seven.
I think Tuesday morning.
Yeah, no problems.
That's a West Coast game, right? Two West Coast games.
It might be something that's scheduled like on the four days.
Do you have a score yet? Score, I was saying. The final score that we've had before. And it's obviously getting harder every time. But it's possible. You can only actually do one. Unlike the scenario where I just went to some campus. Block. It actually kicked a lot. You take all the things out and recover on the other end. By taking some or a seat. Or I'm sorry about the last one. It came out with full two. It's half.
All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item. Second item on the agenda is any resident issues or the residential forum. Seeing no residents here, next I would look for a motion to approve the minutes of the September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting as they were proposed. It's been moved. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Great. Next, Clerk Treasury report. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me introduce Jim Higgins and talk about the twenty twenty six budget ordinance, which is in your package. In some of the first tab, you will be a gentleman.
Hey, Counselors, this is the twenty twenty six budget. There are no changes from what was presented last month during the call hearing. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have prior to your announcement.
Are there any questions? Has everybody had an opportunity to review the proposed budget? Okay, seeing none, we need to take a vote on that, which will be resolution number two oh two five dash.
Two oh two five dash ten dash oh one.
Ten dash oh one. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number two oh two five dash ten dash zero one. It's been moved by Craig. Second item. Craig, all, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Great.
Jim, let's get into the reduced certain appropriations on the twenty twenty five level.
Okay, so Counselors, this is similar to the mathematical mathematics that we have to do every year. You can't spend the same money twice. So we have a resolution for your consideration that would reduce twenty twenty five appropriations in the rainy day. Local roads, community town identification, and the law enforcement, continuing education fund. These are funds that are currently appropriated for this year that aren't intended to be spent. We want to spend them next year. So in order to avoid additional appropriations, we reduce this year so we can look for next year. This would be resolution twenty twenty five dash ten dash oh two.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Jim? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number two oh two five dash one zero dash zero two. It's been moved by Zach.
Second.
Seconded by Cole. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Great.
Mr. President, you have received, and the Council has received, by also electronic version and continued market. The approval of the June twenty twenty five, August twenty twenty five, and September twenty twenty five financial packets. We need a motion to approve.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review those financial packets from June twenty five, August twenty five, and September twenty five? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the June twenty five, August twenty five, and September twenty five financial packets. Been moved by Craig. Seconded by Craig. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Great.
Mr. President, next on the agenda is approval of the bank reconciliation for the month ending June thirty, August thirty one, and September thirty twenty twenty five also being approved.
Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the bank reconciliations for the month ending June thirtieth, August thirty first, twenty five, and September thirtieth, twenty twenty five? Great. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the bank reconciliations for the month of June, August, and September twenty twenty five. Been moved by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Any further discussion? Seeing none, indicate by, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Good. Mr. Dillon.
Let's stay on the financial piece. Drop down to bolt points and then we'll come back. You have forty of the accounts payable vouchers in the amount two hundred ninety nine thousand, three hundred eighty dollars, thirty seven cents. Need approval for our commission from the Council to approve those vouchers.
Any questions for Mr. Dillon? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable vouchers in the amount two hundred ninety nine thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and thirty seven cents. Been moved by Zach.
Second.
Seconded by Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Okay.
Now I'd like to bring Mr. Higgins back for a discussion of semi annual cash flow projections for August thirty first. Jim?
I almost forgot about this. Counselors, I gave you an electronic copy of the cash flow projections running through this year up through twenty twenty nine. I think you'll see this in the general public, all things being equal, we're sorry, the deficit in like twelve twenty nine. We didn't anticipate any regular income taxes given the seven, well, I'm not sure where that goes, or our income taxes plan. That's assuming also we're spending every dollar that we appropriated every year, could never be that. But just for planning purposes, so that you could see where we are at for the next couple of years. Happy to entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, is that a resolution?
No, just acknowledged. Just acknowledged.
Acknowledged. Great. Okay, thank you.
Moving forward, let's jump back to bullet point number five, which is the Title VI Definution Plan updated for twenty twenty five, dated today, October thirteen, twenty twenty five. A dumb tale resolution, which is twenty twenty five dash ten oh three, is also in your packets. And that would happen to be voted on, Mr. President, members of the Council, this law has changed. Not only do we have to have the plan updated, Council, our lawyer, sharp lawyer right here, has to get this thing filed immediately because they no longer will allow you to say, yes, we have a complete stash, we want to review the plan. And we'll move forward. In your packets, we have slid in a updated resolution, which I put a little highlight star on the bottom right. There's two resolutions in there, but let's look at this one. Council has been working on updated information and we're going to skip into the plan. And this resolution allows us to do that. Any questions? We'd like to ask.
Hold that there. So what resolution number do you anticipate this being?
Twenty twenty five ten oh three.
Okay, so are there any further questions? Everybody have the time to review this Title VI information? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number two oh two five dash one zero dash zero three. It's been moved. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same sign. Okay. John?
And we will put in the updated U.S. Census data, which we've done in time this morning. We were having problems getting the data because of the shutdown in D.C. Moving forward, that concludes the Clerk Treasury report, Mr. President, which leaves you with the Town Engineer approval decision.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Dillon? Okay, next, Town Engineer approvals. Order.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Council, David Gordon Prosser, down there. I submitted to Council last week the streets left recommendations from the C.C.A.G. community process. Twenty twenty six dash one. So that is open now and application will be by October thirty first. So we are ready to move forward. Do you approve the street list? Ask for approval of the street list.
And that's just an approval. That's not a resolution that's required. So Mr. Gordon presented to us a list of streets as part of the inventory that would fall on the low end of our maintenance schedule and require the most immediate attention of any of the roads that we have. And again, I'm a big fan of trying to keep our infrastructure in as good a condition as we possibly can. And so I would like to suggest that we answer any questions and then if there aren't any, just acknowledge that we're going to apply for these in the October first call. See nothing? Anybody have any questions with it? Okay, that were approved.
Thank you. And then it would be able to give you all this plan. In that requiring that you also have a transition plan. Because they are needing to get in their funds or what they're requiring for towns being established. You know, on files since twenty eighteen, so this is just an update. They require you at the end of the month alongside the C.C.A.G. convention. The only updates are essentially adding to Billings, maybe coordinator, and then also updating the A.A. work that the town has completed. Including sidewalks, we had added on Seventh and Street, rent A.A. racks will be included, as well as the town's next priority for sidewalks on Seventh and from Pennsylvania. And that's the extent of that thing. Again, it's essentially a matter of file, require your approval, and we're just updated and then developed for application to the process. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thanks for all your good work. And again, you can see we're trying to get three hundred seventy one thousand dollars worth of work completed at the town's cost of eighty six thousand, which is in line with what we've tried to do over the last several years, three or four years or so. Again, trying to be good stewards of our infrastructure here in the town. Okay, anything else for the Town Engineer?
I have something. We talked last meeting about where to put the flashing stop signs on Seventh Street. Did you get any input from the police department? I did not. I did not receive that comment. I've got an informal survey about a lot of people. And the two places that most people say is that when people turn off at Seventh and Fifth going east, they go off on a fairly high rate speed and make that turn at the stop light and then hit the gas.
On Meridian.
On Meridian. So I would suggest we put it at the, it would be the south west corner of that intersection.
Eastbound, or eastbound.
North of Meridian towards the car.
Yeah, so as I've been thinking about, that's the one I heard historically, police pointed out that felt like it's an unusual situation. If you're coming off a left turn, like the stop signs. The other thing I was going to add after I was thinking about this before the meeting is that is the one place where I personally have seen people actually miss the stops. Just regarding the stop signs issue, we have a whole these intersections. But the place that I personally see people like actually not realize the stop signs there is that direction coming off of Meridian. So if the concept isn't applied safely, would it potentially decrease that? I think that's our eyes, and that's obvious on what eyes.
There can be two of them. The other one is coming off of Meridian going south, turning going west. On the north side. Same situation, come off of. Meridian Street, they're pretty good speed, you come to stop, light, turn onto, say you go straight, you don't recognize that there's a stop sign. Short distance.
Illinois.
Illinois.
Illinois and Seventy Fifth, which would be the northeast. Great.
Or on top, I'm just curious. I had noticed the other day that we actually don't have schools of speed limit on Seventy Fifth, like between Illinois and. I don't know. I became it. The reason I thought of it was because someone passed me in the crosswalk the other morning after I was done dropping kids off. Passed me, so. And as first of it, I actually noticed we don't have school speeds on there. I don't know if it's because the distance. We do on Illinois and Hallway Drive, there's a twenty five. Is it due after school? Well, I don't know. See, I don't know any of that, right? That was really my question. It's too cool. Can we make it? Or should we? Should we put that? We don't have to go tonight, but that's just another thing I was thinking about. There's no twenty five dollar signage there.
So going westbound, there's not?
I don't think east or westbound.
That is the automatic light that says you're going twenty five across. Yeah, so there's, that is there.
I don't think there's one going west. Maybe I'll work really good at the next meeting.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Next is the new business. It's a discussion I'd like to have with the Council. I've had another discussion or text. I asked to have another cup of coffee with Ms. Johnson and she was not willing to do that. She asked if I just sent her an email as it relates to the taking or whether or not she'd be interested in donating the right of way necessarily for the sidewalk. She lives on the southeast, or owns the property on the southeast corner of Seventy Fifth and Pennsylvania Street. She texted me back that she has new tenants in there with new babies and therefore not at this point was she interested in doing that. I've had a couple of other texts and conversations. I met her once at Java House. I think that that's a moving target that I don't live to believe will get resolved. And so I would be in favor of hiring Dentons to file a imminent building losses. And let's get this thing moving because we're losing confidence and I get, or we're losing time. And I get stopped on a regular basis asking when the next segment of the sidewalk is going. And it's been two years now since we've done it. So I'd like to move forward. I think Ms. Johnson is a wonderful lady. She's a terrific neighbor. But we can't be any more patient and it's my intent, I think we should be the Council's intent, to move forward. And we're going to have to pay whatever we're going to pay. If we have to raise money, I'm still willing to do that because we're not going to have it in the town budget to be able to do that. But I have no doubt by the people that have pulled me aside to say, when's the next segment of the sidewalk coming? How quick can we get it done? All paying money to have this done. The time is coming. I would like to seek permission of the Council to go ahead and engage Dentons to start up and, you know, file a lawsuit.
We just take a lot of time. Will the next property say a situation?
I have not. And again, until we had one, maybe get more for five, you know, over two people at one time. I don't know. But you know what? I will stop and ask this people. I know they have newly moved in there, new within the last year. And so I will stop and make that point. And then the next house, I believe, we have enough because that's part of the HUD that we had for the property sale of Seventh and Street on Washington.
We have to get the city to remove D cell and. So we got to look at that.
I mean, so they. When someone's put in, it's a newer development.
That was like swashbuckling.
Oh, it's a separation.
Yeah. Those are all three. Each one of those has a little bit of air on them.
I would tell you by the November meeting, I would meet the second property governor and just ask him.
You think the first, I don't know, the process, should the town send an official letter? Or ask me and say, no, can we go to foundation?
So I.
Have you thought like we have to do this? Myself.
Yeah, so my thoughts are, I think it is always more efficient to approach it without the formal letter. I think, let me rephrase that. I think it's best to do it informally first before the town. And I believe I've had that.
Order that.
I've done it twice. If you think you've exhausted all that, all the options, I think it's fine. So I started.
Isn't it even a pound if you go the whole way? It's not like we need, we just need for more or.
Based on their outside of the eyes.
My push was going to be engineer, there's any way to rethink that.
We have a survey done.
No, I didn't.
So that we understand how much right of way we have. And we need about fifteen feet to take. And she, her, in one conversation that I had with her, she was concerned that the setback line would change. And it really wouldn't because we've always. Yeah, and use the edge of the street. So it wouldn't. And I know this is an investment property for her and, or rental property. And so again, I, she's a very, very nice lady. She came to her meeting at Java House with her realtor and had some interesting questions with that. And we talked through it. And then we initiated the survey for crossroads so that we could talk. I said, we don't have how much you need. We sent her that. And again, I, terrific lady, terrific piece of property, but we need to move forward. I don't want to lose any more time than we already have.
People are excited. I just probably have to figure out how much.
Width?
Well, yeah, how much?
I have a tip with drawings here. Actually, you can back it up to. You're looking for twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
But from the back of the curb to the back edge of the sidewalk is nine. What you need, bigger area to construct the sidewalk. But.
Hit back of her.
Hit back of hers, nine. Grass and then.
And the sidewalk's going to have to be a little bit surreptitious as it goes around because they put some new utility pools in recently. We've done that in other locations and on up between Illinois and Meridian. And it actually adds a little bit of.
Universally.
I have had. I've had a lot of very positive things and wonder who the next.
Yeah, I saw a gentleman today as I was going out. It'd be nice if they decided for.
So Sloane, do we require a resolution for this or we can just have it acknowledged?
It'll take five months.
It's safe. You don't need a resolution. It's necessary.
Just approval for an executive to take action.
I would assume that. I think, I think we need more information related to what the engagement would be before any full resolution. And your partner. Was it Alex? Alex has done this, has done a good bit of this. I talked to him. He, depending upon the amount of time he gets into on a, he, on a, and how deep the resistance is as it comes back and review. But again, it's no doubt this is for the public good. And so it's not a question of whether we have the right to take it. We have not done this in the past in the twenty two or twenty three years that I've been around, but there's no doubt about that. And you ultimately just get into a discussion about value of the previous state. But that doesn't mean we don't take it right away. Yes.
Is our engagement with Dentons general or do we need to approve? This is town business, so.
Right, it's town business. So no one thought my idea back about that?
Well, I have a lot of proof. The president's explaining our engagement. Necessary.
Well, I don't want to prove in process, uh, expanding our engagement, necessary, and we give you the process.
Again, I don't know that it takes a resolution. I think I just want everybody to be aware. And if you have any hesitancy, I'm happy to hear that at this point. Uh, but I feel strongly that we're losing some of the momentum that we have. And I've had any number of people who live on Pennsylvania, Washington Boulevard, that says, our kids have never been able to ride their bikes to St. Luke before. And because that sidewalk is there, uh, between Pennsylvania Street and St. Luke's, they're using it to walk, to ride their bikes, and so forth. It's, we all know the positive impacts of the sidewalk. So. Okay. Any other questions? Sloane, you good with that?
Uh, good.
Good. What I'd do is get an engagement letter from dentons that gives me an approximate of what the cost is. He thought it'd be between ten and fifteen thousand, unless we get into a long extended battle, and it could go up to fifty thousand. But I don't think we're gonna be in that. We also are in a position where it's time to start trying to talk to people about raising money for this project and others that we're trying to do. And, uh, I think that we, uh, we as a council need to think about that.
Yeah, I think we should identify someone with experience in the town in collaboration. I never, I know there's many people who do, uh, citizens who might want to, especially for the sidewalk and the police guard, you know, become involved. I, I have different experience out of anybody on this council does, but there are some people who have a lot of experience in the town.
That would probably enjoy having the opportunity to do that. So by the end of the big talk, and, uh, we can bring it to the next council meeting and get a recommendation of who we might want us to talk to. Fair enough?
Yes.
Uh, any other new business to bring before the council?
Mr. President, this is a record to show that our final hearing, our final council meeting will be November tenth, twenty twenty five, seven P M, seven o'clock.
Any? Yeah, we've got a number of documents to sign, please, so everybody don't run out, but.
Take your documents home for your cross.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Come on.
Been moved. Thanks, everybody. Second, thank you. All right, John?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it off.
So we need to sign some stuff. We got to sign some stuff. So this is. I'm bringing, I'm telling you, I'm gonna, you know, those people, like, you know, is there a photo of the video?